Fifth, 2020 Woodya Regional Vocational Technical High School School Committee Meeting. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law GLC 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. This meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom technology. For instructions to follow this meeting live, see the notice of meeting posted on the woodyatech.org. We're going to do a roll call for attendance. Mr. Early.
Yeah.
Mr. Wood. No. Ms. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. LaBella.
Yeah.
Tucker. Mr. Irving.
Yeah.
Dr. Testaverde.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. He was here.
He was.
Here.
There he is, okay. Mr. James.
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yeah.
Ms. True.
Here.
Mr. Chair. Mr. LaSage.
Yep.
And Chair is present. Okay, moving on. Mr. LaSage, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely. See the flag? That's appropriate.
Got a flag.
My pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I hope you're going to be out there in December if we're doing this still.
Yeah, I hope so.
Let's hope we're not doing this still in December. Don't even think it.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Is there any comments from anybody in the audience? No, okay. Comments can be emailed in advance of the 6:30 PM start time to lrian@woodya.tech.us. All comments will be recorded to the record and all attempts will be made to mention them live during the meeting. Any emails received during the meeting before the public comment period ends will also be attempted to be mentioned. I have three letters here from parents that I will read. The first one is from Dan Waitman. Good morning, I have two questions for tonight's school committee meeting. Will families receive written plans for the reopening so that we can understand what each option might look like in practice? As well as how it would work if we started in person full of hybrid but had to move to fully remote? When does the committee plan to vote on their final plan? Please note that we do understand the moving target nature of this situation and am not pushing for one approach or another since it is so difficult to know what to do right now. We simply need more information and communication as we feel very much in the dark and excluded from the general conversation. We had no idea school committee meetings were even happening until recently. And then only after having to dig around online. No email notices, no social media notices, no notices at all came our way. Perhaps the incoming freshman class is not on the email list. Second letter. This is from Marie Katson. I am the parent of an incoming freshman to Woodya. To say that I'm extremely disappointed in the communication from this district would be an understatement. There has been absolutely no communication about the reopening plans except for one email that explained the state mandate and a survey. A small explanation of how hybrid would work was also included. Every other district in our area has shared their plans, had community forums as well as shared information on what they chose and when they would vote.
No.
I learned about the meeting tonight by digging on the website and finding the agenda with the vote halfway down almost an afterthought. I spoke with the principal who was very nice and answered my questions. But again, did not seem to understand my frustration with the lack of communication. Fact that parents know nothing about the plans for next year, even if the plan is, we don't know yet. Obviously, we don't know everything yet and things can change in an instant, that is understandable. But to leave parents completely in the dark a month before school opens is unacceptable. We are very excited to see that orientation was scheduled and the reopening plan would be discussed. I would hope that this is not the first time this will be unveiled to parents. Parents should have time to read the plan and be given a forum to ask questions. I'd prefer that not be during, I'd prefer that not be during the orientation where we should be learning about the school. Maybe there are communication channels where this is being discussed and if so, freshman parents should be made aware of them. Not having these communications is causing unnecessary anxiety and stress on families that is not needed at this time. Please advise how the information from tonight's meeting will be communicated to parents and how we can read the plans that are submitted to the State Education Department. We are looking forward to our Woodya years and hope that this is not representative of your regular school year communications. Thank you, Marie Katson. The last letter. Audra Witkowski. Good afternoon, school committee members. I was given your contact information from Superintendent Lynch following the email I sent to her on August 3rd. We see email below. I have concerns that the reopening of the school is being held up by the MTA Union's negotiations that seem to be motivated more by politics than safety concerns. Ms. Lynch stated that the Woodya teachers do belong to the MTA and that Woodya Tech's Union and the administration are working well together. I understand that the tech is under its own district, but being a resident of Haverhill, I see the Haverhill Public School teachers also belong to the MTA Union. And Superintendent Marata stated in a letter dated 7/30/20 that they will pursue negotiations with all impacted unions to open school with a hybrid learning plan. Yet now that has changed to all remote as of 8/20. Vote to endorse the MTA's position. Until the point when the districts and the state can meet these criteria, we will refuse to return to unsafe school buildings and we will use the 10 additional days at the start of the 2021 school year before instruction of student begins to redesign learning. What does redesign learning mean exactly? Does this also affect the tech? How can this be viewed as anything less than political? It confirms my fear that the education system is being held hostage and our kids are being used as pawns. As I've stated below, I have great respect for the staff in not acting in the students' best interest or that they will go along with everything the MTA demands. And I know they do not indeed have the health and safety of all the students in mind. I just think politics should be put aside and the focus beyond getting the kids back into the school in the safest way possible. I believe parents have the right to know that opening of the school is tied to both Desi's recommendations as well as the MTA Union negotiations and parents should be made aware of their demands. These related COVID-19 and their plans to reimagine the entire school system. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Right, can I, or Chairman, can I? So a couple of things. One, are very anxious to see our plans. And my plan or our plan is to put that out either tonight or tomorrow morning. Didn't want to put out plans that I didn't think we would be able to follow through or cause more confusion and upset and anxiety. So I wanted to make sure that it was well vetted through the staff, through the administration, through the, through everything before I put it out to parents knowing, so I wanted to know that what we could do, we could really follow. So I know people are really anxious. I know many school committee meetings have happened over the last few days, which has really piqued people's interest. I do plan on putting out our plan as early as this evening or first thing tomorrow morning. And I think at that point, I think people will feel much better about where we're at and where we're heading. As far as the MTA and the WREA here at Woodya, we have been working very well together, very collaborative. And I think everyone has the best interest of our students and staff and their health and safety at the forefront with every decision that's being made. This, the plan that we will be talking about later on is not something that one person was involved in. It was a complete community project that we really, we are excited about. You know, when you talk about reimagining education, that's really what we did. We reimagined how the school could operate using, in the pandemic with COVID-19 and how we could do it, get to see our kids and be able to do so safely. So, you know, I apologize to those parents that are itchy to see and anxious about what we have planned. And I, and I understand that, but we will get the plan out as soon as possible, either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning.
Maureen, are you actually putting up on our website the entire draft plan that we received this week that we reviewed?
Yes.
So that entire plan will go out with all the pictures and everything.
Yes, I think that's important because I think people need to understand, no matter what plan the school committee chooses tonight, there could be, we could move out of that plan and into another plan. So everyone just needs to be aware of the different scenarios that there could happen this year and hopefully we have planned well.
All right, just for the record. Just for the record, these three correspondents from the parents will go on record for tonight. And the information on the opening of school will be available tomorrow on the Woodya Tech website. Mr. Early.
Chairman.
Yes.
In all fairness to Maureen and the staff, I've been talking to her quite a bit. This plan that's going to be put in place, this could change at any time, any day. It's very frustrating for everybody, including Maureen and the staff down there and the students, the staff and the parents have to understand, you know, this is, I don't want to say it's a trial and error, but this could change at any time for any reason.
Oh yeah, it's a moving target.
That's the best word, yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Approval of minutes for the regular school committee meeting on July 8th. Motion. Okay, any discussion? We have to do a roll call. Ms. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor. Ms. O'Connor.
She's on mute.
Okay, give us a thumbs up.
Say yes.
Okay, there you are. Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor. Who's Mr. O'Connor? Yeah. Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald. Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, need a motion for the Treasurers Report for June and July.
Move to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yeah.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald. Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay. Student Activities Account Authorizations. Need a vote for that, Maureen?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Move to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yeah.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald. Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Old business, there is no old business posted, reports and communications. There is no student representative report. Maureen, are we getting a student rep in the fall?
Yes, we will try to have a student representative for the September meeting.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight before you, I have personnel actions, nurses to input data for master health, nurses to update student health records, two history instructors, one English instructor, a vocational technical coordinator and an evening school secretary. Resignations of an English instructor and a cafeteria worker. Budget update, Chapter 79 baseline funding for FY21 was $10,835,866. Was an increase of $631,007 over FY20. This increase is based on our October 1, 2020 enrollment report and the social includes an inflation factor of 1.99. MCAS update, at this time, I do not have an update on MCAS. There has been some discussion about MCAS for the fall and for the spring, but we are not sure where that is going just yet. I do want to, I see that Mr. Wood is online and I see that Mr. Fitzgerald is here as well. So I want to add them to the record for tonight. School reopening update, before I begin, I just want to thank the over 50 staff members that worked through the month of July. There were two meetings a week, usually consisting of an hour, hour and a half, but there were three task force and student wellness plan operations and curriculum and assessment. And I, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate their hard work, their thought, their ideas. Because sometimes you just run out of ideas and I think, you know, their ideas are really reflected in this plan and recommendations are reflected in this plan. And it truly was a community effort trying to figure out how we can reimagine our school during a COVID-19 pandemic. So Kevin, I don't know if you're there with the slides. We'll go to full in-person learning. We've been asked by the state to come up with three plans. Our first plan is full in-person learning. These would be academic cohorts of 20 to 24 students. Each, each teacher's desk is outfitted with a plastic, with a front plexiglass shield and teachers would travel to students. We've developed cohorts for our academic programs in English, math, science, social studies, and the teachers would be moving to the kids versus the kids moving to the teachers, which should really cut down on some of our hallway traffic and contamination and as well as be able to really trace if there was ever an issue with COVID-19 here in the building and who would possibly be infected. Our hybrid learning model has Monday with all students and staff being remote and then Group A would be Tuesday and Thursday in-person learning. Group B would be Wednesday and Friday in-person learning. And the cohorts would be of 10 to 12 students and the vocational cohorts would be less than 12. Remote learning, all learning would be remote. Follow their normal schedule and all teachers will be in school unless there is a stay-at-home order from the governor's office. Last year, we were thrown into remote learning on March 14th with little to no preparation. And I have to say, I think our staff here at Woodya did a phenomenal job navigating through some unprecedented times. The learning was not as robust as many would like and there was no accountability for the students as far as grades or as far as attendance. Those things will be much different this year. If we are in remote learning, they will be graded and academics will count towards their promotion and attendance. And one of the, I thought someone had a wonderful idea. We start the day off all together for those that are remote and those that are home. Those that are here and those that are remote with, we start with the daily announcements and pledging to the flag and we just all start our day together, even if you are home remotely. Okay, Kevin. So we did a couple of surveys and we received mixed results. Parents, you know, what model were they comfortable sending their child back? Overwhelmingly, people were either happy with the hybrid or the in-person learning programs. I need to be clear that if there are people that choose not to come back to Woodya in person, that we will have a remote-only option and we will be working on those plans over the summer once we have a clear number of how many people in that, that program. The staff, as you can see overwhelmingly, the staff want to get back to seeing their students here at Woodya. We do have some staff that did not, you know, expressed some concern about returning to school. My hope is that once they see our plan and the safety precautions that we have set up here at the school for them, that maybe that might change their mind and they might feel more comfortable returning to Woodya in the fall. Social distancing, so if we are all to return to school, all 1,300 of us, we, our classroom desks are four and a half feet apart from front to back, left to right. If we move to the hybrid model, we would be at least six feet apart, front to back and left to right. We are looking at a staggered arrival and dismissal. We can't, you know, in the past, we let everybody off at the buses at the, at the front turnaround and that would have to change significantly. We would have to have multiple drop-off points where students get dropped off and are able to stay the six feet apart. And then obviously limited numbers in our classrooms. So the thing that I think everyone is having a difficult time with is the mask requirement. This is a non-negotiable. So this is required of all students and staff. We do want to try to, especially since students will be sitting in their academics in the same desk throughout the day, again, decreasing the contamination that they would have throughout the school. We do think that we need to try to get students out as much as possible. Having masks breaks as much fresh air as we can possibly get during the nice months, I think, will be really important. And then obviously, if you have a cloth mask, you need to be washing it and making sure that your masks are cleaned. And those are things we will work with our students on at the beginning of the school year. Ventilation, all classrooms for student use have windows. This was one of the things, we have many interior classrooms. We moved all of those classrooms to the outside rim of the school, so they all, will all have windows. Each classroom will have two fans, each classroom will have an air sanitizer as well that will be in each classroom. Again, trying to make sure that we're keeping our students and staff safe. And then to get back to the task force work, you know, I know many of you have seen the plan. Much of that work came from these three task force and it was unbelievable. I think everybody, it was, you know, we all kind of came together at a crisis and that's when you know you have a great school. A crisis happens and everyone just pulls together to try to figure it out and how we can make this work. And again, I can't thank our staff and faculty and administrators enough for their hard work this summer because this never could have just happened with one person. It really was a community effort. And then I think we have a little video. Can hear it. I think Kevin's probably working on it.
Okay.
If it, if it doesn't come through, I will send you the link so you can see the video this evening. But this was a Department of Education video that they, they thought was important for school committees to see. No luck, Kevin?
I'm here.
I'm gonna try and read her lips.
Doesn't have a mask on.
Well, she's alone in her office.
All right, well, maybe if we can find a way to show you the video before the end of the school committee meeting. We'll try to do that. What do you think, Kevin? We did practice run and it did work during our practice.
Best laid plans.
All right, I guess while we're watching the end of this, if anyone has any questions for me or any of the members of the administrative team that are here tonight.
Maureen, when I was reading through, I might have missed it, but do we have any plan that if someone were to get sick and we know about it, what we're going to do in regard to school dismissal, change of hours, change of plan period? Has there been much discussion on that?
There has been some discussion. Really, we would work with our nursing staff and our Board of Health and they would direct us as where we need to be. You know, again, the fact that we have students in cohorts makes it that much easier to see where students have been and who they've been there so that if there was an issue, we would know who to quarantine and who would need to get tested. So, yeah.
Maureen, on the hybrid model, why wouldn't the teachers come into school on the Monday and do remote from the school? Wouldn't it be more advantageous?
They will be here Monday, the teachers, the staff will be here every day.
Okay, that's still different with you.
Yeah.
You said everybody would be remote, sorry. Sorry.
There any other questions regarding the?
Maureen, are the teachers, Marina, the teachers 100% backing this program?
Um, I would say that the teachers' union wrote me a letter not too long ago. They have some things that they would like to discuss further, but for the most part, they feel that they have been a part of the planning. And have, have been really cooperative about trying to get our students back. You know, we've, we've made some adjustments and tried to make sure that the ventilation systems are good for their classrooms. You know, but again, I want to say, you know, at any time, things could go into a different direction. But I do need a vote tonight about what plan the school committee would like us to open the school year with.
Okay. We'll have a motion to accept all three models for the reopening of the school as presented. Approve the hybrid model to begin the 2021 school year. And with the ever-changing pandemic grant, the superintendent the authority to change to a different model throughout the year.
So moved.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr.
So my understanding is regardless of which plan our committee or any committee votes for, the final decision will be the state. Is that true?
Um, I'm not sure. So this, what you choose to decide, what you choose to decide tonight is what I have to submit to the Department of Education that Whittier Tech will start the school year in hybrid mode. They are aware that things could change and there could be frequency of cases of COVID-19. You know, one of the things I'm concerned about is if the building is 90 degrees, can we really have students with masks on in 90 degrees? That might be a day that we would be remote. Those are some of the discussions that we continue to have and will continue to try to be, you know, the administrators tell me I use the word pivot a lot, but we would try to have to pivot in those cases.
But the state could say that all school districts will be remote?
They could.
Okay. We're going with the, with the hybrid model right now. That could change in the next three or four weeks by the time school opens.
It could change tomorrow.
Exactly.
Do we have any idea what the state plans to do?
Right now, the state is leaving the opening up schools up to each individual community.
Okay, good.
In regard to our communities, are most of them doing what we're doing?
Um, there's actually a pretty large mix. Some are doing hybrid, some are starting remote. So I would say we're about 50/50 right now.
Lisa, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I'm reverberating. We're only going to vote on remote. We're not going to vote on each individual model?
We're voting on all of them, all three models.
Individually or?
No, collectively. We're voting on the whole packet, but we're, we're voting to open with the hybrid model and we're giving the superintendent the authority to change if it will be required to one of the other models. Is that right, Maureen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just, I don't understand why we can't vote on each individual one.
We're voting on all three.
Yeah, but collectively, not individually.
I think what we're doing is, if I'm wrong, Maureen, help me. We, we have to send the plan to the state, Lisa. So the plan includes what we would do under any circumstance. So when we accept the fact that we have three plans, we know what our preference is and we are accepting our preference, but we're also saying if things change, Maureen has the flexibility to notify us and go ahead and do what's already been approved by the school committee as well as the State Department, I think.
I understand that because that's what we also did with Kentucky last week because I also serve on that school committee. I just don't understand why we're just voting on all of them collectively. I understand you need a, a three-part plan. Then to me, that should be a vote one, we're voting in the plan. And then I think the second vote should be which plan we think is appropriate.
That makes sense.
I mean, I'm not the chair and I'm not, you know, the executive committee or anything like that. I just don't understand why there's just one vote happening.
So I, I guess I'm a bit confused. I guess one vote would be the, the guide to reopening plan for all three is what we're talking about. And then the second vote would be moving with the plan the school committee chooses.
Okay, so there is two votes. Okay.
There's one vote right now.
For the plan itself, three-part plan.
Yes, yes.
No, no. Let me read the motion again, okay? So everybody's clear? A motion to accept all three models for the reopening of the school as presented, the packet that we have. Approve the hybrid model to begin the 2021 school year. And with the ever-changing pandemic grant, the superintendent the authority to change to a different model throughout the year. So it's the?
Mr. Chairman, it's Scott. I have a quick comment, question.
Basically, three things there. It's, we're going to approve the three models. We're going to approve the hybrid model to begin the school year. Then we're going to grant the superintendent authority to change as required. Scott, you have a question?
I do. Maureen, it, I, you know, I went through these votes as well and I read the guidance from DESI. And I guess that motion's a little different than the guidance that I had read from DESI. So I'm a little bit confused why the, the motion reads that way.
So what is your understanding, Scott?
So the guidance from DESI was originally, there was supposed to be a vote to submit all three plans to DESI for feedback on those three plans. Then DESI was going to provide feedback on the three plans. And then the school committee at that point would vote on which plan they chose. So what we did was, two or three weeks ago, submitted all three plans. DESI provided feedback to those three plans to tweak them. And then when they were brought back, you chose which plan you wanted to go with. You didn't vote to accept all three plans.
Right, right. And that's, we did do that. We did forward what we thought we might be opening up the school year and forwarded all three plans. Luckily, we did not receive any feedback from DESI, so they must have been comfortable with the plans that we provided. It's really a committee as to whether you accept the whole back-to-school packet and the three plans outlined and then have a separate vote about which plan we open the school year with.
Yeah, I, I had thought, and the guidance that I had read said, so what, once you did that step one, the only vote required is submitting the plan you're going with, not accepting all, all three. So I, I feel a little uncomfortable with that motion because I don't think that that's consistent with the guidelines and the requests that were issued by DESI.
I guess.
If we wait until the next school committee to vote on it, it, it's the night before school opens.
I think.
No, I'm saying we should be voting on what we choose. We shouldn't be voting to accept all three. That was not in the guidelines issued by DESI.
No, Scott, but I think it would provide clarity that if for whatever reason we end up going remote, that the plan as proposed is satisfactory to the school committee. So it's just a point of clarification. Yes, the final school, this school committee meeting is about choosing which model of the three presented that the school committee would like to accept. And I guess for, for informational purposes, I would like to know that the school committee is okay with the other three plans as outlined.
I think maybe perhaps we should withdraw the last motion and then make a motion, now this is a suggestion, I'm not moving anything at the moment, I'm just presenting some ideas, move to accept the hybrid model. And then vote on that and then go back and discuss the rest of our project and make a second motion allowing, Maureen, that we approve both of those plans for possibility sake. And if in need, Maureen would have the option at that time to make decisions and inform us. So we make a, we make a formal decision on the hybrid model, but yet we still make a second motion, which was Lisa's, Lisa's concern, that we accept the other possibilities, but allow the time to pass so that decisions can be made and we would be informed as things transpire. Does that make any sense?
So are you asking for three votes or two votes?
Two votes. Two votes. But we have to withdraw the last, the last.
Okay.
Well, let me withdraw. I think the motion states that in reverse. We're first voting on accepting all three plans and also to recommend plan number two.
We are.
That's what the motion is, right?
So can I make a friendly amendment to the motion to break this down into two votes?
What's the, what's the?
The amendment would be to break down into two votes. The first vote being, being voting on the three-part plan. And the second vote being voting on the recommended, the administrator's recommendation of the hybrid plan for the school.
I'll second that amendment.
All right, I'll withdraw the first, my, my previous motion. And I will make a new motion. A motion to accept all three models for the reopening of the school as presented.
Second.
Second.
Somebody, the chair can make a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay, you want to make the motion, Tony?
Yeah. The other motion wasn't withdrawn either. I guess we got to make a motion to withdraw the first one, Brett. Correct.
Brett made that motion.
I did.
I did. You, you can't make it to chair. I made it after you said it.
Okay, all right.
Did that get seconded?
Second.
Okay.
So we need a roll call vote.
Sorry.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we need a motion, a second motion.
Brett, Brett.
Yes.
I, I vote yes also.
Oh, Mr. LaSage, sorry.
Okay. Still at the end of the table.
So now we can, now we can bring up Tony's motion.
Yes. You there, Brett?
Yeah, we all set for a roll call vote for that. We have the motion and the second.
What is the motion?
What was the second motion? We haven't heard it yet.
To accept all three plans.
Right.
That was the first one.
Yeah, we just voted on that.
No, we just voted to re.
You need the one, the hybrid.
Make a motion to accept hybrid as the initial school year start.
The motion is to withdraw.
First one was to withdraw. The second one, this one here is to accept all three models.
Right.
And the next one will be?
Hybrid.
To approve the hybrid and grant the superintendent authority to change as required.
I will make.
Point of clarification. Point of clarification, the first one was. All right, point of clarification, the first one, uh, uh, there's no vote required to withdraw a motion. Whoever makes it just withdraws the motion.
Okay, well, we voted on it. So now we're going to vote on the motion to accept.
That's against Robert's rules though. So I, I think we have to be careful going forward that we actually follow Robert's rules.
I needed to withdraw it and I didn't do it.
Okay. Are we ready? Did someone make a motion to accept all three models?
I'd make a motion to accept all three models as put forth to the, to DESI.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call vote? Mr. Early.
This is for the all three, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker right here. Mr. Irving.
abstain.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we need the next motion. Someone want to make the motion?
Can I ask a question?
Hybrid model.
Ben, do you have a question?
Yes, please. I'm not sure it's going to change my vote, but I think it's important to ask. So how are we going to communicate the expectation to students that what they're doing is going to count towards, you know, promotion to the next grade and so on? In such a way that it's hard to, when you're hybrid, you know, partially remote, you know, not in school, excuse me. It may be hard for students to focus and get things done. So I guess I would just, it's a comment, I guess, not a question. We have to make sure we do that in a way that the expectation is there, but we'll be there to help them if they have challenges or barriers to concentrating on schoolwork. Just a comment.
100%. And I think one of the things that came up, if you read the plan, was about student advisories and checking on student wellness and so that every faculty member has a connection with a student. And hopefully that will help us do exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Are we still in the motion?
Pick a motion to accept the hybrid model as the first.
Okay, and we have to add.
Really here.
The part about the granting the superintendent authority to change.
I'm going to make a motion. My microphone isn't working well.
Chip, your audios, we can't hear it. Is there someone else that could make the motion?
Brett, if you can't hear me, I make the motion, we accept the hybrid model and also make sure that it's written in that the superintendent has a right to change at any time to benefit the class and her staff.
Second.
The second? Do we have a second to the motion?
We did, second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Repeat what we're voting again, please.
My God. We're voting to approve the hybrid model to begin the 2021 school year. And to grant the superintendent the authority to change to a different model throughout the year as, as required or as needed. And to grant the superintendent the authority to change to a different model throughout the year as, as required or as needed.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
No.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was interesting.
All right, uh, Maureen, you still got one last thing.
Yes, um, so I have before you, it's my recommendation, I need a vote for the school building committee as set forth in the business managers memorandum of August 5th. I would like to add one person, our assistant principal, Adam Gagny, to that list, and then we will need to send this off to master school building authority.
And we do have to vote on this, uh.
Yes.
Accepting this committee.
You wanna ma- I wanna announce who's on the committee, please.
Sure, Tammy Dontremont, our comptroller, myself, Carol McLeod, the town manager of Merrimack, Lisa O'Connor, school committee in Groveland, Charlie LaBella in Amesbury, Bob Hardy, our plant facilities director, Brett Murphy, the chair of the school committee, Chris Leganis, the principal, Mr. James, a school committee member and former faculty member, Cara Cosmas, the business manager, Dick Early, a school committee, Paul Moskovich, the locational coordinator, Patty Lowell, director of pupil personnel, Bev DeSavo, our retired vocational school administrator, and I'd like to again add Adam Gagny, our assistant principal at Woodyear.
Move to accept. Requires a motion.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, are these meetings gonna be remote or in person or mixture or depending on the time, when the time comes, what things look like?
Yeah, I think it depends.
Okay.
You know, I think some might be here in the building, some might be remote, um, yes.
Thank you.
Maureen, when do you think these meetings will begin?
Um, Cara, are you on the line? I think we need to kind of get started relatively soon. I'm not exactly sure when we have to start meeting, I have to call her tomorrow to follow up on this. We have a couple of more deliverables to get to them, I think we have deliverables to get to them by December. I would imagine that shortly after that is probably when we're going to start. But we certainly could put together a get acquainted type of meeting and establish norms or whatever before that, if that is full of the committee.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, any more discussion?
Are we still in process? We still haven't been accepted, we're still, this is still process, we're going through more hoops before they still say yes, is that a correct statement?
We are in the eligibility stage, which comes before the feasibility stage, so we have some paperwork kinds of things that we need to get in place before we start moving into the next phase.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald. This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, uh, principals report.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, the rest of the school committee members, I have for you tonight, um, approval of the handbook if we want to, the parent teacher, I'm sorry, the parent, student parent guardian handbook for 2021. Just to, uh, really no major changes on to our original handbook, um, a few things on the table of contents you will recognize. You'll recognize Power School, which is our new information system that's gonna take place in iPass. We also have, um, you know, obviously some of the name changes in the school committee. We have our policy that was approved by last year of the cell phones and telephones, electronic device usage. We're actually putting it in because we had an amendment last year, uh, and then some of the policies, um, that were updated early by the school committee are, are in there, uh, in page, uh, if you, if you look, kind of scroll through it, uh, the highlights in page 12, 18, 20. And then some of the letters in the back, um, meaning the, the letter pages, I should say, um, in the homeless students and foster care, some of the wording and military children, some of them were tweaked up as well. That's really the, the, the only changes in the handbook, obviously, um, you know, this is a COVID-19 year and we have, um, our new plans, um, that are out there that are gonna be out, that Miss Lynch talked about, so this is our handbook, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I have a question, are we putting this out in paper or are we just putting it on the web?
Uh, we will have, um, as soon as, again, um, Dr. Testaverde, we, we obviously don't have people here printing or anything like that, so it will be out on the web like, uh, normal. We are trying to keep everything online at this time, but, um, normally, uh, you're correct, we have a printed version for you, uh, as well as the incoming freshmen. So we hope to do that, um, if we can get the, the manpower in here to do that.
I wasn't even sure whether or not we should be, uh, due to the, due to the pandemic and are we sending out paperwork that could, I'm, I'm no scientist here, but I just was wondering, is there any guidelines on that, Maureen, in the, in state regarding circulating paper like that?
There isn't any guidelines, I can tell you that Woodyear has really moved the last two or three years to less paper.
Yep.
So, um, this would definitely be one of those things that we would put online, um, for parents and students to see, if they do have to, um, email us, I think there's a, they have a system, Chris and Patty have a system about how parents, um, sign off that they've received that, that this handbook, so. We have had a system in place for a couple of years, not using paper any longer.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. True.
I had a question, um, I just, to know, um, on page 29, it talks about co-ops, but it doesn't say anything about, you know, the face coverings and things like that, is, um, how can you, you know, because they're gonna be offsite, uh, possibly, I'm assuming that seniors maybe might be allowed to go on co-op? And do you just not put that in the, in the paperwork or, or in, in the policy now, or are you gonna add the face coverings to this, to this?
Well, I think there's some, we will, there will be some amendments to the handbook, um, as far as co-op goes, there is a separate form that students now need to fill out regarding COVID-19 and their employers to make sure their employers are COVID-19 compliant, so.
Okay.
Those things in place already.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Okay, so I, I also have in front of you tonight, um, for the school committee.
Well, let's, uh, let's do, we have to vote on this.
I'm sorry, Chris. Yeah, sorry.
Do we have a, do we have a motion?
Oh.
I motion.
To accept it as is, for it now.
Second.
I can.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah.
Mr. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald. This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay, all right, next, Chris.
Okay, thank you very much, Chairman, uh, also in front of you, uh, is the draft two of our 2021 school calendar. If you notice, um, a few of the, the start of the school looks a little different from the last time we looked at it. We, uh, the state has given, um, our, our school systems, uh, 10 days of professional development for the teachers and staff. So you can see that, uh, August 24th to the 25th, uh, we have our freshman new students orientation, uh, which is coming up soon. We're gonna have that as well as the 25th, 26th, uh, like we usually do, um, with our new teachers will report. And it'll be a combination, obviously, of remote, uh, as well as, uh, in person. Uh, on Monday, uh, is the start of our, uh, PD and our staff comes in August 31st. And then you can see the dates, uh, throughout, uh, the September 16th is when our freshmen and new students come through the door. And the start, September 16th, September 17th, and it seems like we'll be in the hybrid model, that's when our, our groups will be coming in. You know, our students will report and with our group A. So, um, and then you can scroll down, uh, just pretty much regular of what we've had in the past, and, uh, you can see our, uh, graduation as well and, uh, throughout there, so if there are any questions, again, we're here to answer.
Uh, Joanne.
Hi, I just had a question about the, um, the orientation, the freshman orientation. Given that we had some letters that were from concerned, uh, parents of freshmen, just wondering, um, how, you know, just briefly, how will you do that with, is that gonna be an online event?
Yeah, all the, uh, all the presentations that we're gonna have in person are all gonna be video, audio taped, uh, for, for the parents to go ahead and do that. We're in the process of finalizing that, uh, the, this week and also next week, so we can get, get all that together, but yes, there'll be an opportunity if, if they do not want to come to the school, then they will be able to see that.
So it'll be a, it's a hybrid model of orientation, thank you, I didn't understand that we were, okay, so it's not a hundred percent virtual, it's, it's a hybrid model.
Right.
Depending on comfort of parents, great.
Yeah, I thought it was important for parents to see the school and see how things end up so that they feel comfortable, um, sending their children here to Woodyear in the fall.
Yeah, good move.
Are you guys going to be doing appointments so that you don't have too many people coming into the building?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
It's been separated into several groups, so, and we have a, a limit to each group of what we can handle.
Mr. LaBella.
Not to digress, but on the hybrid model with the groups of A and group B, are they gonna be formulated to help on the busing? Social distancing?
They weren't, they weren't formulated by the busing, they were formulated by a student's vocational technical area, their grade level, um, their academic, um, level in their classes. And we will be sending out a survey to parents regarding transportation, um, over the next week or so, so that we can start planning our busing.
I saw on the survey, 65% wanted the kids to take the bus.
Yes. We have a lot of work still to do.
We're on it, as you said.
We're on it.
Okay, um, did we get a, get a vote on the motion on the, uh, school calendar?
Someone.
No, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker. Right here, Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay, uh, business manager, Cara.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee, I have a couple of things for you this evening. The first is something that you see from me every August, and I usually take both of these together because they go hand in hand. And that is the variance report for the end of the year and the transfer request. And the variance report, um, for this one, uh, includes, um, columns that align to the, exactly to the transfer request that's in that. And if, upon approval of the transfer request, it will bring all of the district accounts into a positive balance. And then in the last column of the variance report, you'll see, uh, what the ending balance will look like, um, in each account after we do the transfer. So I would ask your approval for the transfer as presented.
Go move.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one thing, um, the, um, there was an expense, um, it was lease expense transportation, is that leading up to now we need a new bus because there was, no, it has nothing to do with that?
Okay. No, I, um, I prepaid, uh, one of the suggestions that we had from the department of, um, of Ed was because we had saved money, um, this year because of the early closure, uh, we did not know where we would be financially next year, and there was a suggestion that we try to prepay some things as much as possible. So we paid a number, um, um, installment of the, the leased buses. Okay, thank you, I, thanks, okay, understood.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah.
Ms. O'Connor. Mr. LaBella.
Yes.
Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and speaking of buses, um, I also have a request in your packet for an appropriation of $100,000, and this is because we will need to purchase another bus this year, uh, our Ames free routes are very, um, heavy, and so we need an additional bus in order to take care of that. So I'm asking for approval of an appropriation of $100,000 from the transportation revolving account so that we can purchase a new bus.
Second.
Cara, the money's in the account, correct?
Yes, if you recall, many years ago, we approved, um, outside of the district, a revolving account, and
Correct.
When we need to, uh, do capital purposes, I usually ask you to appropriate the amount, just, just be transparent and to keep you in the loop, yes, we have the money.
Brett, who did those motions? I couldn't.
I seconded, Dave.
Who?
I made the motion.
Lisa made the motion, Dave made the second.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Okay. We, we need these, we need the bus just from enrollment, not from COVID, not because we're staggering.
Exactly, we would have needed this bus with, even without COVID, we would have needed an additional bus.
Does staggering drop-offs help with the number of buses needed?
We will have to do double runs in some of the communities, that is the reason, um, that Superintendent said earlier, we have to do a, um, a, a survey because we need to know exactly, uh, which people are selecting, you know, buses and which bus stops so that our transportation coordinator can then go and look at the counts in the buses, and then we can determine how much staggering we have to do, how many double runs we have to do, so there is a lot of work still to be done.
Right, if the survey shows that nobody wants to take the bus, I'm guessing we're gonna not, because of COVID or whatever, I'm guessing you wouldn't make the- I'm guessing you wouldn't make the purchase then, or? Are you going to, you're going to wait for the survey to, to make the purchase?
No, we, we typically update our buses every five years. So if that were in, in fact, the case, we would probably turn in one of our, our five-year-old buses.
I see, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was my question as well. Are we doing any, any lease, any more leasing or swapping or turning something in? So it's still in the planning stages, is what you're saying, Kara, is that correct?
It is, but you know, I, I don't anticipate that anyone will take the buses. We, we, we're too far distant from many of our communities that for some families, they will have no choice but to take the buses. So I, I do feel confident that our buses will be pretty full.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. James.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fuchera.
Yes.
Mr. La Sage.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Here, person. September annual agenda items. It will be review and update the strategic plan. Superintendent update on goals.
Can I add one thing, Chairman?
Yes.
We do need to look at the November 11th school committee meeting, that is Veterans Day. So we.
Okay.
Enter the 12th.
Yeah, I saw that, I was going to do that on the meetings, but we can do it now. Yeah, the, the November 11th, school committee meeting falls on Veterans Day, so we need to change that. Do we want to move it to the next week, Maureen, or another day?
Maybe that week, if you want to do it Tuesday or Thursday, we can move it to the following week.
Does anybody have a preference? Want to do it on that Tuesday?
How about Thursday?
I'm sorry, somebody's.
Yeah, how about Thursday?
Yep, we could do it. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have a problem with doing it on November 12th, the day after our normal meeting?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, so the November meeting will be on the 12th.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just had a question. Do you want to put on the agenda for next month that we have to look at the annual dinner that's scheduled for September 30th? Want to put that on the agenda so we can talk about it?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you were going over September agenda items, and I thought maybe we should put that on the agenda.
Okay, we can talk about it.
For discussion, yeah, because we'll know better when we're there, what we should be doing about that.
Okay, Lisa, did you get that? Subcommittee reports, executive. Need a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor. Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fuchera.
Yes.
Mr. La Sage.
Yes.
Okay, instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
Although we have not done anything as a subcommittee, the school and the task force have done quite a bit in regard to curriculum and instruction due to the needs of the current situation. I think it might be wise for the subcommittee to meet in September just to be updated as to how things are going. I don't know whether or not we will actually be in school then, or whether we should wait till October. I'm going to leave that discussion to Maureen and see what she thinks. But I think the subcommittee should be apprised of how things are going.
In my notes, I, I was going to ask for a meeting for October, just because I think we'll have a better sense of where we're at, if that would be okay.
Okay. If something were to come up after the first couple of weeks before the meeting, would you call a subcommittee meeting or touch base with me so that we can address anything as, as the needs may arise?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, plan operations, Mr. Tucker is not here.
Wait a minute, excuse me, do we need a date, Maureen? Do we need a date for October, or shall we wait till September meeting to set the October date?
Let's wait till the September meeting and we'll set it.
Thank you, I apologize, Brett.
No, no problem. Plan operations. I think earlier we had a great report from Bob. Anything else, Maureen, for plan ops? That you know?
I think it's a, going to be a moving target. We'll continue to update as we need to. And we will keep the committee informed of, of what we're, what's happening. I mean, we could certainly do one, get another plan ops in October after we've been at school for a couple of months and for an update about how those plans are going. That would make sense.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Salary negotiations, Mr. Early.
I believe we need one coming up shortly, am I correct, Maureen?
Yes, we do.
Why don't we get started with school for us and then we can schedule one?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to do it sometime in September.
Yeah.
Do you want to pick a date now?
You tell me. You want to do it right after the, you open school?
Yeah, let me pick a date, hold on one second, I'm just checking my calendar. Do you want to do it Wednesday, September 9th?
Well, that's, yeah, that's the same night that we have our school meeting.
How about Wednesday, September 2nd?
You want to do it the 9th? It's no problem.
Yeah, I'd like the school committee to vote on it.
Okay, let's do it the week before, maybe we'll do it the week before, so it gives everybody some time to look at it.
Right, so September 2nd. And we'll do it at 6 o'clock, Mr. Early.
No problem. Everybody else in agreement?
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Is it going to be a remote meeting, or is there an option to attend remotely?
Don't know yet.
I would say so, Lisa, based on how things are moving, some might be in, some might be out, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Maureen, in regard to meetings like of this nature, we have so many large spaces. Could we possibly be doing, beginning to do more? Not that I'm saying immediately, but looking at auditoriums, cafeteria, other places where even your office and expansion to have enough social distancing to be looking at more meetings in the building again?
Absolutely, the only problem is, is if we are even a little bit close, there's an echo on the audio from our computers.
Ah.
Even though Lisa and I are next door, I had to shut the door because it was a real echo. So if we can work through the glitches and kind of all get throughout the building, we can certainly do something like that. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, just to clarify, was that salary negotiations at 6:00 PM on, is that right?
Yes.
September 2nd.
Okay, because I'm on that, I just want to make sure.
Policy, Mr. Irving.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we receive three policies in our packet, two having to do with COVID-19. EBCFA is face coverings and COVID-related policy of supplements that would be added, EBC. And then one on harassment, ACAB. And because of the immediacy of these new policies, I would move suspension of the rules so we can take one vote this evening. So I move suspension of the rules.
Second.
All right, we'll have to do a roll call vote for that, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fuchera.
Yes.
Mr. La Sage.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move EBCFA, face coverings, EBC, COVID-related policy supplements, and ACAB harassment for the first and final reading to be adopted for the school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fuchera.
Yes.
Mr. La Sage.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Meeting dates, the next school committee meeting is September 9th. We have a salary negotiations meeting, September 2nd at 6:00 PM. There any other meetings going on, Maureen, that we need to know about?
I'm aware of.
Okay.
I have a question in regard to meetings. Were we supposed to be having an organizational meeting soon? Was it, we had, we usually have them in April, we didn't have it, we postponed it till the fall. Is that the organizational meeting and are we still meeting remotely?
I think we had talked about at the end of September or possibly October for that.
Oh, the organizational meeting, okay.
Yeah, I have it on September 30th, that's why I asked him to put it on the agenda for the, for next week, you know, for next meeting.
Anything else? New business?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, still got to do a vote, roll call, Mr. Early.
Mr. Early, yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Hi.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Fuchera.
Yes.
Mr. La Sage.
Yes.
All right, good night, everybody.